I want to thank everyone for being here tonight, here at Clarkson County Fire Department Town Hall. And we appreciate you fixing for organizing and arranging for us. Thanks for the guests. Looks like a light crowd tonight, but what we are proud to tell you is it's live on Facebook. And we, we carry our open door policy that, that we have promised all along. Now expanded out to Facebook. And at any time for those on Facebook that have a question, the, or try it. Just send up your question and we're going to attempt to answer it. But at this time, I would appreciate our local Sheriff's Office Chaplain, one of, one of twelve, to come forward and he's a little bit up in a prayer. And I thank you Chaplain Barber.
Thank you for being here, sir.
Yes, sir.
Good to be here tonight. Let's put the Lord in prayer. Dear Father, we just thank you for this day, Lord, and we thank you for the family that we receive from you each and every day, Lord. We thank you for these brave men and women that are here tonight that serve as local county community fathers. We ask that you bless this meeting and let us make the right choices that we need to be a better service to our community father. In the name of you, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Chap. Well, you know, the purpose of the Town Hall is the extension of the open door policy. And Sheriff, as a sheriff, I'm proud, proud to be able to provide that open door for you. So I want to tell you why we're here. We're here to bridge the trust between the community and Sheriff's Office. You know, we've gone ten months now, I've been in office, and I feel like we're making such strides to connect to the community. Kind of proud of where we're at. Our command staff is here tonight. What we'll do is we're going through very informally because I want you to feel comfortable in your question. I want you to feel comfortable in conversation. If I feel is that your questions need more depth, what I ask you then is just wait after the full introduction and then you can take a, take the command staff one-on-one afterwards and get your answers. Answer pretty quick. But at this time, I'm going to start to my right. Introduction is Chief Deputy Hickman. Can I introduce this? You want to stand or?
No, you're safe. I can probably talk loud enough to not leave a microphone on. Like Sheriff said, my name's Tim Hickman. I'm the Chief Deputy at the Sheriff's Office. My responsibility is to manage the daily operations of the Sheriff's Office, which includes the Sheriff's Office and the various divisions within it, Communications, 911, as well as the Detention Center. Some of the other things I do, the Personnel Matters, I do those. I work with the divisions to complete or compile an annual budget for the Sheriff's Office to make sure all the needs are prioritized and that we have a budget to provide the best law enforcement protection for citizens. But again, that, those are my primary responsibilities. There's a lot of other things that I do. As I just talked to the Sheriff a few minutes ago, throughout as some of the commanders of the other divisions do their talk. If there's anything that I do or I feel like I need to tell you as part of what they do that I'm involved in, you may hear from me throughout the whole thing. Again, my name's Tim Hickman. I'm the Chief Deputy.
Thank you, Chief. Yes, sir. Third in command is Major Hewitt. Major Hewitt?
I'm Chief Hewitt. I'm the Major with the Sheriff's Office. Some of the stuff that I do is oversee the Sheriff's Office outreach operation. That includes the events that you see us out, like National Night Out, some festivals. So we were there. It's the first time we've been out there. The whole of my Sheriff's Office. And many more events that we go to. We look at potential for recruitment and also being able to provide the community with information. As you see in the back, we have all kinds of information that we think that group partnerships with local businesses in the county. That's a valuable asset for Sheriff's Office because there's a lot of routes out there that can provide material. But somebody got paper that'll reach out to local business owners to help them with that material. That's why you look at earlier. I'm also the Crime Stopper Coordinator for Bover County. So that entails me going and doing the recordings. I see that information in-house and also from our local agencies, Washington, Cleveland, Chalk City. We've been really active in that. One of the changes that occurred this year was going to P3 tips for the crime reporting. Tip reporting, that allows you to download it out from your phone and you can actually submit your tip by yourself. Or, you know, call unknown location additionally unless you video and still images of your tip. So if you see something going on in your neighborhood that don't look right, or you know is illegal, you can get a picture of it. That gives us more to go on because that tip, when you send it, I'm going to get it all over County. I'll get it. I'll do that and I'll decide where it goes. If it goes to Washington Police or the house will be separated by narcotics or criminal investigation. So, yeah, it's been a big asset. We, in the last month, we've been really busy getting tips on wanted fugitives, stuff like that. Best time so far was like 12 minutes. We got a tip, got it to Patrol. They, you know, it was in Aurora. It wasn't in Washington, real close by or nothing. We had a guy in custody within 12 minutes to get the tip. That's a testament to that software. And we have information in the back for P3 tips QR code, which you take a picture of on your phone with a camera on your phone. It'll take you to the app and you can download it. I'm also over professional standards. We switched over to Power DMS. That is a software that's used to obtain our policy. And we are working on changing and updating our policies. Sheriff came in, he was friends with me, looked at what policies are missing, what needs to be enhanced and changed. So that's something that we have to be active about. Our jail administrator is not with us tonight, but give you a little bit of information about our jail. And that's something everybody hears about. We have an 85 capacity jail. That's for male and female adults. And we average around 60 inmates. So now some of those inmates will be in safety in another place. But that's, you know, that's where we've averaged lately. We also have people that come in every weekend. That's over 50 extra people would be coming in on weekends for probation, like DWI and stuff like that. But we've been working with our judges. The sheriff actually reached out to our local judicial judge. Recently, when we had some issues, medical issues, that we needed to keep inmates out. That didn't have to be in there to keep our isolate, our inmates, to stay there from people bringing in diseases. There's always a hand-in-hand going on that to try to keep population managed. In addition, Lieutenant Richards, David Richards, he oversees Community Watch. And we're going out, Sheriff is big on wanting to have every neighborhood in Bover County recognized and with the Community Watch group. Community Watch is about observing and reporting what's going on in your area to allow us to help you solve crimes in your area. Not to be a vigilante and going out and pretending like you're law enforcement officer. But, you know, recognizing something going on, sharing that with other people in your watch group. And then you collectively gather and information, report it to us to help us solve crimes in your area. We have all kinds of information in the back on that. We have like a survey you can do in your house to identify any issues. Security for your own home. We also have steps, document, five easy steps to start a community watching your area. So if there's any interest in that, you can reach out to Lieutenant Richards on that and be glad and help him out actually. He is, lives there. One more thing on Crime Stoppers. So that is a civilian run board. Money that goes from the fundraisers and everything that goes to town tips. So like when that person was picked up, within 12 minutes, we sent out a pound. Because that information got us right where we needed to be at the right time. So one of their next upcoming fundraisers will be the Holiday Ball. Have you ever heard about that? The next will feature the Band of Oz, it'll be December 2nd. And the doors open at 7 o'clock. It'll be at Washington Yacht and Country Club. The tickets are sold at Washington Police Department, Sheriff's Office, and I believe First National Bank if you're interested.
The Crime Stoppers is a, again, just elaborate on it. Crime Stoppers program is a civilian operation. Entirely separated. It's a 501(c)(1) program. And separated only by its structure and the board they have, they have budgets. And what the Sheriff's Office is able to do is partnership with them and provide that training, that guidance, and a coordinator who will bridge that community between the civilians and the law enforcement. And I'm proud to be that partnership with them is a much needed program within the civilian population. So for those who are able and have a schedule that allow them to do partner willing, they need those volunteers. They need those people to go out, go to these events. Your presence, the stroma of their presence, to show they're unified, make their voice against crime. That's their way of speaking. So I endorse that for civilians to be part of their program. So at this time, we can go to our right is Captain Casey Neal.
Good evening and thank you for coming. My name is Casey Neal. I'm Captain of the Special Operations Division here at the Sheriff's Office. So under Special Operations, we have four specialized units that follow that. First of which is the Drug Unit, which I'm a part of. Our Drug Unit consists of five deputies that are highly trained, highly motivated deputies that enforce every controlled substance and alcohol here in Bover County. And the reason why they're so passionate about their job is, like myself, all of them are raising kids here in Bover County. I've got two sons in elementary school here in this county. And we see the, the problem with, with drugs in our counties, especially the more harmful drugs, fentanyl, methamphetamine. I know we have some firefighters and EMS personnel here tonight. You guys probably see it firsthand, overdoses that come and rise. So that's something that is high priority with our Drug Unit is combating the fentanyl. This year, we have seized a lot off the streets, more than we ever have. Reason why we're seeing more of it is a fight that's not ours, but we're seeing it more prevalent and a lot cheaper. Not just our county, but everywhere in our state. So it's something that's high priority for us. Since January, we have investigated almost 200 drug cases, most of which being felony drug cases. And of that number, over half is fentanyl and that. So it's, the trend is different from years prior with drugs in the area. So for us having kids, raising kids, most of us on the Drug Unit have been in for 10, 12, 13 years. And we've seen kids in school, getting with wrong crowds, that peer pressure, and seeing the progression of them growing up to now we're arrested and dealing with. So we know the importance of reaching children at a younger age. So us, again, raising kids in this county, we're, we're really passionate about that. Another thing that falls under Special Operations is SRT, which is the Sheriff's Response Team. So what the Sheriff's Response Team does is responds to high-risk occurrences that happen in the county. For example, a hostage situation or high-risk search for one of that nature. Prior to Sheriff Hammond's taking office, those, those things continue to happen. They, they always happen in this county. Before prior to that, it would be members from the Drug Unit that would respond, or members from Patrol or Criminal Investigation. Sheriff Hammond saw the need to have a specialized unit with training and equipment to better handle that. So that's something I'm really excited about. I'm taking part in getting that program off the ground. So now we have eight deputies that are specially trained and are continuing to train to answer those types of calls. That's very important. I'm glad to see that service for our county. And next under Special Operations is our Drone Team. So I know there's several fire departments and agencies in the county that utilize drones. We have one at the office that we utilize for search and rescue, for example, or an SRT call out. We used one just the other night. Middle of the night, we're able to see where other deputies were in the area around the house. Allows us to make better decisions, safer decisions that way. But the biggest thing with that drone that's a game changer, I'll say, is the, the search and rescue areas. Since I've been in law enforcement, I've been a part of a couple of search and rescues where maybe a small child walks away from the house in the night. Or elderly person with some sort of cognitive disability that walks away in a rural area. And sometimes if it's middle of February and it's 20 degrees or colder, town's, you know, not on our side. So being able to utilize that drone with the night vision and infrared technology, that allows us to locate somebody a lot quicker. So very fortunate to have that piece of equipment at our home. Last under Special Operations is our Mobile Field Force. And what the Mobile Field Force is, is a, a group of deputies that are equipped with specialized equipment. We have 40 deputies, I believe, right now that are equipped to respond to riots, any kind of civil disturbance that may occur in our county. Hopefully that never will happen here, but we're prepared for it. A couple of years ago, we've had a couple of situations that could have turned that way. And now we have a group of deputies that have the equipment and the training to respond to that, to help protect property and, and life in this county. So again, the thing that keeps me the business is the Drug Unit. You know, we are continually to fight the opioid and fentanyl epidemic. And just recently, we did a seizure of over 100 grams of fentanyl in our county that was going to go in the street. So the guys work really hard and catch another job.
Just go to your right, if you don't mind, Captain Citizen, and we will elaborate on the, Captain Citizen is grown by presence tonight. And elaborate on the peripherals and the, and the ados on today's fentanyl capabilities.
So the, the drone that we currently use is DJI Mavic 300. It's capable of sustaining flight for, it's capable of sustaining flight for about 45 minutes on scene. It can provide over, overwatch for any incidences that are taking place. It does have a FLIR camera where we're able to see infrared at night during daytime. Just like Captain Neal was saying the other night, you know, we were able to watch where the officers were standing in relation to a house in a standoff situation and it allowed, you know, just a real good overwatch of what was going on from a safety standpoint. Some of the other things that we can do is we have the ability to use a speaker that attaches to it and we can actually talk to a subject if we were in a barricaded situation. We also have tether capabilities where we could deliver something up to 12 pounds with the drone itself.
That's, I appreciate you.
Yes, sir.
Now explain who you are.
I'm Kevin Citizen. I'm the Captain of Patrol. We have 26 patrol officers and then myself, and we provide 24-hour, seven-day-a-week, 365-day-a-year coverage in Bover County in four separate zones. We use a, we use four zones that include North Side, Washington, Chalk City, and South Side. We try to keep at least one deputy per zone 24 hours a day. We respond to emergency and non-emergency calls, which includes everything from domestic violence, sexual assaults, robberies, felony, misdemeanor assaults, larcenies, frauds, commercial residential property crimes, business and residential alarm activations. We do some traffic control and traffic complaints, as well as welfare checks and animal complaints. One of the things that we do is the Sheriff initiated the Ace of Hearts Initiative, which is animal, children, and elderly. So we, we are the initial response on that and then we'll forward it to CID and Captain Waters can probably explain that a little bit better. We serve both civil and criminal processes. Another thing we do is area and neighborhood patrols. So we'll check into an area or a particular neighborhood and we'll call that out. Checking that, it kind of goes along with the Community Watch. We do offer business and residential checks. If you go on vacation or are going to be out of town for a couple of days, you can simply call the office, tell us, you know, where your residence is, how many vehicles will be in the yard? If there's not going to be any vehicles in the yard, who a key order would be to contact if something goes wrong with your house. And what we try to do is get by at least once on a day shift and twice on a night shift and check your residence for you. We do that by signing that check a number so that we never give out your location or your address. We would give out the number for your residence. One other thing that Sheriff Hammond implemented was the School and Bus Safety and Security Program. We have deputies, when school is in, we have deputies, we'll stop in, speak with the staff, see if there's any issues going on in the school for that day, make contact with the SRO that is there with allied security at the time. And then also we check buses along the way while they're traveling to and from to drop off kids and pick up kids. That's something that we call our 1090 program. And some of the other duties that Patrol does is we do escorts for charity events and parades, funeral escorts, public speaking engagements for school career days, job fairs. We assist both Criminal Investigations and the Drug Unit with crime scenes and any cases that they may have. We also assist fire and rescue at emergencies, scenes, hazmat, disasters, severe weather, hurricanes. When we are the initial response on search and rescue for any loss or missing person. And then we, we also do transporting of inmates, both prisoners and mentally ill, to and from other facilities throughout the state for incarceration, judicial hearings, or treaties. And Sheriff, you.
Thank you. Kill a lot more. At this time, you have to go with the Captain Wesley Waters.
Good evening. As the Sheriff said, my name is Wesley Waters. I'm the Captain of Criminal Investigations Division in Sheriff's Office. Where I lead a team of seven detectives that are primarily responsible for conducting crime scene processing and following up on investigations of non-narcotic felonies, most of which Captain Citizen reviewed you on. I want to hit home on that. We will follow up on animal abuses that's in the county. We work closely with Animal Control with that. We also conduct investigations into arson. We, we work with other agents when need be, Fire Department Office and the State Bureau of Investigation. During an investigation, detectives review and apply elements of criminal law when they're conducting their investigation. Make sure that they're able to meet that crime before they make that charge. Dependent on the crime, detectives can collect physical or electronic evidence. We gather crime stopper tips. We conduct interviews with witnesses and suspects. Well, oftentimes we can recover stolen property. We send evidence to the State Crime Lab in Raleigh for analysis and openly we obtain warrants for the suspect's arrest if applicable. Or in some cases, the case is sent to the District Attorney's Office for their review and for them to determine whether or not they would like to proceed with charges through the indictment process. We have one detective that is assigned the task of reviewing and following up on unsolved homicides in Bover County. I want everybody to know that there are no statute of limitations for murder in the state of North Carolina. If you have any information that can lead to an arrest of any unsolved homicide, please contact the Sheriff's Office or contact Crime Stoppers through the information that Major has provided earlier. Criminal Investigations Division also has one civilian that is in charge of evidence. Her primary responsibility is to catalog, store, and dispose of physical evidence during an investigation. I want to speak to a minute, speak for a minute about some arise in some cases that we've seen that's fraud. Unfortunately, a lot of people in this state and Bover County have fallen victim to crime, uh, fraud. You know, if it sounds too good to be true, then it probably is. We've had some residents in this county lose thousands of thousands of dollars to offshore other countries that they're out of that money and we, out of our reach. So please don't become victims of fraud. We have information in the back that can help you with fraud recognition. Thank you.
Appreciate it. And to my left, Assistant Director 911, Assistant Director, Assistant Sheriff.
So, yes, my name is Thea Arnold. I'm the Assistant Director of 911. So when you call 911, the first few things that we ask, we're going to ask for the location of your emergency, your name, your phone number, and then we're going to ask you to tell us what's going on. If you call Needham Enabling or the Fire Department, there's going to be a protocol, a question that we're going to go through. Just know that when we start asking these protocol questions, it does not relay help at all. Our partner has already decided to prepare a day for the Fire Department, but these protocol questions aren't going to allow us to be helped given these particular instructions. Kind of like, kind of like instructions that can help you safely exit a building if it's filled with smoke, a vehicle, exit a vehicle that's filling up with water. Again, just remember that when we're asking these questions, our partners have army system to help, so it does not relay that at all. We do also have the capability for text and I'm the one. So if you are ever put into a situation where you cannot physically call 911, you can text 911. And we are able to take the back and forth with you to find out what your emergency is and get help sent to you. If you have, if you need to call and report something and it's not an emergency, you can do that on the non-emergency line, which is 252-946-0101. Again, that number is 946-0101. Every day in the 911 center, we take on an average of 300 to 400 calls, but we answer 50 to 150 questions a day. We have a staff of 14 in the 911 center, and that includes myself and the Director of Communications. Along with our Sheriff's Office personnel, we also dispatch 14 fire departments, seven EMS departments, two police departments. And we also contact other resources such as Animal Control, ESS, line, coasters, and very special.
And to my left, Captain Gerard.
Thank you, Sheriff. And I'm Captain Michael Gerard. I'm the Captain of Support Services. I have three areas of responsibility. One of them is court operations, police and logistics, and ID. Sheriff is responsible maintaining the safety and security of the court. We have five bailiffs in the court. Then they're responsible for securing the security of the court. Bailiffs also bring inmates from our jail and other jails to court and turn them out. Another function of cooperation will be civil processing. We have two deputies that are responsible for serving eviction and. We have two deputies that are responsible for serving eviction and bits of, uh, extraneous property, where we go to give somebody property and anything. This section also administers free trial police electronic. Fleet and logistics, I am Sheriff Hammond's fleet manager. We have eighty units in our fleet, including a trailer outside, a command center trailer, two military troops, um, radar speed trailer, and two transport vans and one transport van. Another part of this logistics is the management of our uniforms, equipment, inventory, crime response, to make sure every, for the Sheriff's Office has everything they need to be there to operate, and any tool they may need. And IT, uh, we have two IT technicians, one of them behind the camera tonight, and they do a great job keeping all our electronic equipment far and up the deck. Thank you, Sheriff Hammond.
Thank you. So, you have met our command staff, and what you may not have been aware of is how technical the Sheriff's Office is. There's a lot of facets to, and a lot of hats that each one of them wear. One of them don't have a singular job, and we have an organizational chart that describes that job description. It's pretty, pretty thorough. I'm proud, I'm proud of this command staff. The structure actually is everything, though you see that graph is counted. Crime rate, still waiting on a statistic, so I'm not gonna try to beat you there, number that is not factual, but I can tell you that the crime arrests have increased in our drug population, and that's what our focus is. Uh, our focus also is in handling mental ill throughout our camp. Every one of these divisions have a role to play with, I hope, camp and mental illness population, whether it's jail, drugs, medication, it, it cycles through our office, and I will tell you that we have a, we have a lot going on with our mental illness, which in turn has got to do with our drug problem. And I, and I really hate to give you a report, but I'm gonna tell you, our drug, uh, problem here is fentanyl, and what we're gonna do tonight is be inviting a guest, and she's always invited, Miss Elena Hill, and I believe she's probably the most versatile, most informed, educated woman I have met in the civilian population here that will welcome her, welcome come up at her will, but she's gonna introduce herself, she represents the...
Fentanyl victims.
Yes, ma'am, well, I was gonna say that she represents her son.
Yes, ma'am.
Who is not here with us, and I'm, let her explain her son's story.
Stand over here.
Stand right front, yes, ma'am.
Uh, my name is Elena Hill, and I was born, I was a boy, he was born, he was going to be, and he was killed, I can't know. When I started farm, he was killed off, and I didn't know what it was, and so I made my mission to find out exactly everything I could about his deadly life and try to speak out. So, I have aligned myself with two, two groups that work closely together, and I'm the Fentanyl Victims Network of North Carolina, and, um, the website is fentchnal.org, and Forgotten Victims of North Carolina, which is a Facebook group that provides support for being members of anyone who has lost a loved one. So, the mission of those groups is to honor our loved ones that we've lost and we teach them, we support law enforcement, and we support laws that respect fentanyl. Um, we provide great support to family members and support support is there is a pay, whether it's death by distribution, or any kind of court case related to your loved one's death, we support that, we fully support recovery efforts and use of marketing, um, as well. So, fentanyl is killing a different variety of people in our community, um, it is killing babies and toddlers, teenagers, um, young adults, and those that do have some issues as well. Um, so, my mission is to get out in the community and make, um, people in the community aware of how this is gonna be, and what you can do, um, as a community, and the things you can do. Um, so now, I wanna thank my sheriff's man and his staff. So, in July, and I'm, I'm going off of the news, um, in July, the main supplier of fentanyl in this was arrested in Bover County. Um, in August, the Bover County Sheriff seized over a hundred grams of fentanyl in Aurora, and this has enough potential to kill over thirty thousand people. Now, when I read that, you may not really get it, but let me put that in the first place before you. Two nanograms of fentanyl, which is basically a little dust of salt, has the potential to kill someone who has never been exposed to it. Right here in Bover County, we had a, a toddler who passed away from eight nanograms of fentanyl at four years old. So, if that puts into perspective how little it can take to actually kill someone, it is two nanograms. So, for us to see the hundred grams of fentanyl for, for Sheriff's Office, that has saved so many lives, um, in this community, and I just, I just feel like he needs to be recognized for that, and his team as well. So, what can we do as a community? Um, talk to your family members about fentanyl, um, say the word fentanyl out loud, he has done a great job of stressing that in my new articles and his campaigns, his handouts and everything like that, so we need to stress how deadly this drug is. Um, report any suspicious behavior, um, call Crime Stoppers, use that app, um, and then we also need to stress the importance of, don't take any kind of medication unless it's a property that is off work. Um, there's no drugs that are out there that are safe for you, there is no heroin, there is no cocaine, that it is fentanyl. Um, support friends or families that have lost loved ones, um, without judgment, support law enforcement, toll dealers accountable, um, and support your representatives that do support stricter laws on growth and fentanyl, um, a biggest part that you can support is just by vote, your vote, it counts, it matters, and you can honestly say, you know, save lives by voting for the candidate that is gonna support stricter laws and enforcement of fentanyl. Um, and if you have any questions, I have handouts, I have, um, information, anything you need, I have parts out there if you wanna know more, if you wanna know, um, specifics or anything like that, anybody can always be in the chat. Thank you for listening, and thank you, the Sheriff's Man has invited me to come share my story, bring my papers with me, and just get that conversation going, because the best thing that we can do is talk about it, and the more we talk about it, the more we're gonna break down today. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Hill. So, kinda wrapping up what we're here to do, I wanted to just give you some facts, and I believe you, uh, heard some of these numbers, but our, uh, efforts in Bover County when I came to the Sheriff's Office, was the drug enforcement, school safety, and those two, I wanted to give you an update, what I believe we and the team have accomplished to make Bover County a safer, and we're not exempt from any kind of, uh, mo, uh, any kind of attack on our schools. Say to you, to Bover County, our deputies have taken this path, and they have showed work ethic, fortunately, showing up at the schools, showing up at these buses, riding behind the buses. I wanna give you a number, um, the ten ninety program, the schools and the school buses was nineteen hundred fifteen checks, nineteen hundred, one thousand nine hundred fifteen individual deputies contacts. Either, either watching the bus traveling, watching for violations of vehicles around those buses, and watching those, the behavior of the kids on the bus, and being available if there was a criminal act around that bus, and also going to the school and making that contact. So, you know, every day I get these numbers from the patrol division commander, it is impressive, and those deputies work ethic, want to see Bover County safe, and I commend, commend that leadership. He spoke about the house checks, make sure you understand that we are here to come to your home, to give you an assessment or survey of your security plan, talk over your security plan, talk over your, their home, whether you want us to go check one way or your way from the house. All that is just as easy as calling us and having a deputy to, to your residence, one-on-one with you. So, another aspect I wanna make sure is the Ace of Hearts. Make sure if you see a indication of abuse of animals, this, the Ace of Hearts is the cruelty, awareness of cruelty against animals, children, and elderly. It's a program that, that's, we've been, at long, we've been enforcing for years. But if you see a dog or animal wrapped around a pole, and, and I use this analogy because it's more and more prevalent, but I want you to drive home, you see it, the grass is worn, and the dog is out around the post, we live in some hot summers this past summer, and they've got no water bucket available to them, this is cruelty. This is not just some animal hanging out, this is cruelty to that animal that's just as dry mouthed as any of us would be, were parched, working in the yard, that animal was the same way, and when you see them ran butchers or trying to get their, what they're, they're acting out. But a lot of them, how many felonies we have already charged based on cruelty to animals, because of the lack of, lack of care, lack of veterinarian care, lack of water, and lack of food, and not just a, not just walking up on it and assuming that it's a violation, it's a bona fide, investigated, violation, and we're gonna charge you. I want you to know, we're, our team is looking for it, we're riding the roads, we're looking for these traits, and we're gonna find it and we're gonna charge you, and if it's a felony, you're gonna go into the courthouse as a felony, and that's our goal. Same with children, if you know of a child who's not being cared for, some of these kids are living in meth houses, that are, that are living in the, in the dunes and the, and vapors of these drugs that are being, they don't know anything. And same with our elderly, how do you think our elderly are being abused? Being, a lot of elderly being kept at home, not sent to nursing homes, and their families are still taking their drugs from them, pushing their narcotics, taking their narcotics, and they're selling them for their grandchildren, their children, their family, or stealing them from them. That is elderly, taking their dollars from them, taking their money from them. That is another crime that was very difficult to get in and identify from a patrol perspective, but if you have the knowledge of someone's being treated that way, get on Crime Stoppers and do an anonymous report. Call into the, uh, Crime Stoppers Anonymous tip, or call the Sheriff's Office, we'll protect your name, important to the Crime Stoppers, their process. All right, we have enjoyed tonight, it looks, uh, do you have any questions from Facebook this time? At this time, there are no, no questions? Anyone on the command staff, any, any last things you'd like to speak? All right, any questions from the audience? Yes, sir?
First of all, thank, um, I was a dear cat, a dog. Oh, the, uh, the victim was named Javel, uh, uh, back in two thousand, uh, place Javel, and, and, well, first of all, was that for you, and so has it been perfected? And has that kind of been, there?
The jail has came back up in the conversation for the last few months. There is currently a jail committee to meet monthly, and that does not fall into purview of the sheriff, although that committee has reached out to the sheriff for guidance and to get, just to get some guidance on what needs to be approved within the jail. All right, I'll tell you that there is a committee, don't have the date of the next meeting time, but... So, the answer that I'll give you is that I will continue to work within the confined space that we're, we have in that jail, and we'll continue to, to do the best job, and yes, the jail is a safe environment, it's, uh, it's a safe environment, and it'll continue to be approved if something else becomes unsafe, like I had to discretion to make it safe. It is, uh, there's a committee, I highly recommend you come, go to me, I mean, we're invited just then to public, I would recommend you do.
And my next question, um, and this is a little more personal, uh, recently, uh, we've been studying, and basically, it's, I, I think, well, I am a very constitutionally invited area, you can, like, Sheriff, only because I know that it's a means of self-defense. And I know that here in rural Bover County, we're a county of hunters, recreational shooters, and I don't see a pattern where guns are even a, or a problem to recreational shooters. Criminal, criminal element have their guns, and we're seeking those out, and we wrestle them, but I did hear that she put them on a moratorium, thirty days, no carry, no public carry, and I...
And I would agree with your assessment, that is, in my opinion, in my understanding, unconstitutional. United States Constitution, and if you're in North Carolina, it would be a North Carolina, abolishing the North Carolina Constitution. We do have that freedom of that, like, exercise, we can carry. Hope that answers your question. Any other questions? There you go. Any, any other question? Well, look, once again, we're excited to be here. After this, uh, we're going to close up, we'll be around for a few more minutes, and we wish that more people would have taken advantage of what has been offered to them. As I've mentioned earlier, I believe I'm going to accept the fact that, that as a working sheriff, I make myself available throughout Boehrert County, and I'm, I feel comfortable that people know that I'm here, you know, I can be at practice store just as good as I can be at town hall. And I can be anywhere available to answer your question. And I have showed that, staff has, they do not sit around in the office, they're out and about. They make themselves available, so feel free to contact us any business day or night, and we're going to answer your questions. All right, thank you again, and any other comments? Captain, would you like to close us out? If we'd not introduced you, Captain Parker, I'd tell you he was our Sheriff's Office chef.
Sheriff, a pleasure to be here, it's an honor to be here. Just give the Lord a prayer and the book closes written out. Father, dear Father, I thank you again, mother, here and now, Lord, and thank you for the blessings each and every day, Father of our life. Dear Father, I ask that you put angels around these fine men and ladies that serve our service, our community. I ask that you put angels around all of us that we return home to our loved ones tonight. God has spared safety, Father, in the name of Jesus, pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Captain. Appreciate you doing that, sir. And our next, uh, will be at Plugs Creek Fire Department on October twelfth.